County School Board is called to order. We'd like to welcome back all of our School Board employees. We hope that you all had a safe and restorative spring break. Board Member Campbell, will you please read our commitment statement?
With pleasure. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the School Board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Thank you. All right, and for our inspiration and the pledge, we have Ms. Megan Mangumall, Public Education Foundation Officer, who will introduce who will be providing us with the inspiration and the pledge. Hello?
Thank you, School Board members and Dr. Gullett. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, first as the new Executive Director of the Foundation, but ultimately because I am here to recognize and welcome two outstanding educators recognized as the Golden Apple Teacher of the Year for 2021 and Rookie Teacher of the Year. The Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program was started in 1991 under our foundation, and it is developed to honor and recognize our district's outstanding teacher leadership. Each year, five teachers are selected and named Golden Apple Teachers, and they become a part of a prestigious Golden Apple Academy. Out of the Golden Apples, one is named as Marion County's Teacher of the Year at our annual gala. Our Golden Apple Committee also selects a Rookie Teacher of the Year representing the newest educators in our district. All six teachers, along with dozens of school-based teachers, were featured recently in a livestreamed event at the end of January, which was scaled down because of COVID, but ultimately, we wanted to make sure our teachers were safe and celebrated. So I am proud to be introducing today our newly selected 2021 Teacher of the Year, Christine Fernandez, and Rookie of the Year, Emma Dingman. Teacher of the Year Christine is from Shady Hill Elementary. She teaches kindergarten and first grade, MCPS online. She joined our district in 2013 and has three decades of teaching experience. During her acceptance speech at our gala, she shared with us the ABCs of distance learning, and her A was for appreciation. So Christine, on behalf of our foundation and our school district, we appreciate you and all of our school district teachers for the outstanding work you are doing. And our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Emma. Emma teaches VPK at Emerald Shores Elementary, where she actually started her career three years ago there. During her speech, she had shared with us the words, "As a teacher, I am seeking to educate with excellence." Thank you, Emma, for representing the amazing teachers who teach with excellence in our district. I welcome both of you now to share the pledge and inspiration.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having us. Just over 30 years ago, as I was getting ready to graduate from the University of Florida, a book, an essay book, a book of essays came out as the number-one New York Times bestseller, "All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten." Some of you may know it. Well, being a graduating senior from the College of Education, of course, I had to run out. I didn't know what it was about. All I knew was the title, and I was an aspiring kindergarten teacher, so I had to get myself a copy. This is the copy, and I display it in my classroom every year, and it serves as an inspiration and a reminder of the importance of kindergarten.
So when I was preparing, I looked through a large amount of extremely inspirational quotes and poems, and I decided to reach out to Christine and just see, you know, what she was thinking, and she shared this with me, and I was like, we absolutely have to read this. And so, as early childhood educators, I thought it would be the most appropriate for us to share. So this evening, we would both like to share the inspiration with you.
"All I really need to know about how to live and what to do and how to be I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but there in the sand pile at Sunday School. These are the things I learned."
Share everything.
Play fair.
Don't hit people.
Put things back where you found them.
Clean up your own mess.
Don't take things that aren't yours.
Say you're sorry when you hurt somebody.
Wash your hands before you eat.
Flush.
Warm cookies and cold milk are good for you.
Live a balanced life. Learn some and think some and draw and paint and sing and dance and play and work every day some.
Take a nap every afternoon.
When you go out into the world, watch out for traffic, hold hands, and stick together.
Be aware of wonder.
Remember, the little seed in the styrofoam cup. The roots go down and the plant goes up, and nobody really knows how or why, but we are all like that. Goldfish and hamsters and white mice and even the little seed in the styrofoam cup, they all die and so do we.
And then remember the Dick and Jane books and the first word you learned, the biggest word of all, look. Everything you need to know is in there somewhere. The golden rule and love and basic sanitation, ecology and politics and equality and sane living.
Take any one of these items and extrapolate it into sophisticated adult terms and apply it to your family life or your work or your government or your world, and it holds true, clear, and firm. Think what a better world it would be if we all, the whole world, had cookies and milk about 3 o'clock every afternoon and then lay down with our blankies for a nap. Or if all governments had a basic policy to always put things back where they found them and to clean up their own mess.
And it is still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out into the world, it is best to hold hands and stick together.
We are very honored to be here tonight, and thank you all for inviting us to share a little piece of kindergarten pre-K with you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dingman and Ms. Hernandez, don't run away. I'm sure the board has some thoughts to share with both of you.
I love that so much. I love that that book has been an inspiration for you, and every word of it is so true. And sometimes it just takes us all back a moment to say, wow, it really is simple if you just apply the same principles you learned at such a young age. I had such a joy being on the Golden Apple caravan, seeing both of you during that process and seeing all of your little students on the screen and hugging you, oh, sorry, hugging you around in the playground, and it was so fun. And I love that both of you, with us as a board, starting to have a stronger emphasis on early education and those early learners. I love that our Rookie Teacher of the Year and our Teacher of the Year both represent the population that we understand needs our most attention right now. So thank you so much. I'm just overjoyed, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you to both of you for what you do every day, dealing with our kids. Everything I need to learn, I learned in kindergarten as well. So, and I think most of us did. What you do on a daily basis has a huge impact and puts a firm foundation for these kids so they can succeed. But we really appreciate what you do on a daily basis, and congratulations on the awards.
Thank you.
I echo everything they said. Congratulations. It is such a pleasure to see outstanding educators and going through the year that we have been through, and you're both, I can tell you're smiling because of your eyes, and I love that. And Ms. Hernandez, the fact that you embraced online learning and made it fun for your kids, it can be done, and you are the example of, I can do this, and my kids will learn. So thank you so much. And to our wonderful rookie, I will be at Emerald Shores tomorrow, so hopefully I will stop in your room. Okay? See you tomorrow. Congratulations to both of you.
Yes, congratulations. I did have the honor of being on the committee and of the Rookie Teacher of the Year and part of the selection process for Ms. Dingman, and I did have the privilege to watch your, and it was interesting because we looked at it online, and just observing you online but watching your other students and how you interacted with them and prepared, your other little students, I have the most respect for both of you with that. And Ms. Hernandez, thank you for taking that on after 30 years. That was a great example of being flexible and doing what's best in any situation for your students, and you guys have such a challenging job, and you guys pulled through, and thank you for just being stellar teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. To see both of you in action with your kids during the caravan was just a joy, and it's so clear. I was glad to see your kids were out running around, Ms. Dingman. That was their time, and that's what kids need, and you could see them playing with each other and doing their thing, and one was very interested in your balloons, I remember that. It was all about those. And Ms. Hernandez, you know, both of you, the kids love you, that's so clear, but they're also really focused on learning, and this is what has stuck in my brain. They were all very happy for you, appropriately saying, "I love you," and then they were like, "Could we please get back to color bingo now?" So clearly, you've instilled a love of learning, and there isn't anything more important than that. So thank you so much to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kevin Christian, Director of Public Relations and Multimedia Productions, please come forward, and Mr. George Albright, Tax Collector for the Kids Tag Art.
Reverend Cummings, see this? Mr. Albright is on his way in.
There he is, pushing his way through the crowd.
Mr. Albright, I'm not going to touch this podium, so it is clean and non-contaminated, okay? For you. Right on over. Come on down. I've not touched it. Let me first say that I am presenting on behalf of Jo Crowder, who would be here, but she is handling a family emergency that happened this morning, so keep her in your thoughts and prayers, okay? Tag Art, raise your hand if you know what that is. Raise your hand if you don't know what that is. Raise your hand, period. Tag Art is a creative art program that started 10 years ago in the Marion County Tax Collector's Office under Mr. Albright's direction, and basically, it is a creative art program that allows students to literally create their own car tag, their license plate, and you all have received those before, I believe, and you will receive those again. Ms. Crowder has those in her car, so rest assured, you'll get yours.
Make sure you fight over them as pass board.
We won't let you down.
Over the years, you have met a gentleman named Steve Hall, who presented the big check. Unfortunately, Mr. Hall is no longer with us. He is another victim of COVID. So out of respect for him and Mr. Albright and all of the office staff, I'd like to ask for just a moment of silence. Thank you for that. So our students create these car tags with their own imaginations. They're given that sheet or that paper that's that size. They have to draw and color and paint and all that within the parameters of that, and then there are competitions held in classrooms and at the school level to send the best four or five or the best two.
Best two.
Best two from each school to Mr. Albright's office, to which community representatives and the superintendent and a few others go by and pick their favorite, and hence the judge's choice in all of those awards. The schools share in all of the monies donated for the projects and in the proceeds generated from the sale of those car tags, so you can buy them. This year, the program raised $14,000, and that in and of itself is a remarkable amount. But over the last 10 years, Tag Art has raised $101,600. That's donated money that benefits our school art programs. So thank you to all of the sponsors, to Mr. Albright, his entire staff in the office that helps with that. And now, Mr. Albright, I'm going to hand it over to you. Tag, you're it.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not. It's a very sad day because Steve, as you all know, he was, how do you say that? Well, he was bald, okay, so you could recognize him. He was the bald one that would come with me to be the almost bald one. So, but Steve always brought the big check with him, and I say it because we're celebrating Steve's life, but Steve's the only one that knew how to make the big check. So let alone, this whole thing was almost a figment of his imagination. He started it with some people down in Polk County, and now it's all over the county. All the counties do it. And I know you, I know Beth will remember that during the recession, when art programs got gutted and music programs, there was literally no money, and we started this thing right when that happened, and we're able to give an infusion of that money to that. So it's just been a fun thing. I'll never forget when Ed Dean was sheriff, he, it's also, there's a very spirited competition because everybody's gotten, they're like playing poker. They know which tag they want, but they don't dare let anybody else in the room know they want that tag. I thought Ed was going to arrest somebody because they, somebody grabbed his tag, and he wasn't really happy about that. Didn't have a gun on him that day, though. But it's really, it is so cool, and it, and I know, Madam Superintendent, this was your first year of seeing it, wasn't the pride in those kids, they were just so beaming, and it really goes to show that there's children that, this is their special skill, this is their calling, and you see it in their eyes in a way that you don't see it in other kids, you know? Me, I can just, I can't even make a stick figure, and that makes me, you know, and then you see some of what goes on there, and it's just amazing. I'd be remiss to say that even though Steve's not here, that you're able to get with Woods Printing to anybody that's listening or watching, you can call Tom, excuse me, Tom at Woods Printing, and he will continue to put the orders forth, just like we did through Steve. We're going to continue, but we have a lot of shoes to fill. Jo sent over a kind of a memorial tag from the school system that had angels on it and clouds and things that Steve was, because Steve was our angel, and we love him and we miss him, and we had a celebration of life that people from here came and everywhere. So, well, God bless you, and thank you so much for having me. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, my, I didn't know about that. Yeah. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the March 23, 2021, School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of C-13.1 that has been withdrawn completely and C-15.1 that has been moved to discussion.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the revised minutes for the January 28, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Moved by Board Member McCall, second by Vice Chair King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 4, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We'll now move on to persons requesting to address the board, and I don't think we have the School Board Attorney.
He should be.
Is he here, telephonically?
Ask if he's here, that's the only one.
Okay. Attorney Powers, can you hear us? And he didn't answer for attendance, so for the roll. Okay.
Yes, I had it on mute.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me sufficiently?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures to public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, whether regarding use of one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board's secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record, and secondly, spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to two minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield the time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and provanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name or identifying references to or clarification of other students or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair Thrower, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Now, we're made on the line.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Secretary Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers this evening?
We have seven speakers.
Okay.
Do you want them all to have five minutes or do you want?
Yes.
James David Stockton.
Greetings, Chair Thrower, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. G., and the entire MCPS family. Tonight, I greet you with concern about what I've been hearing and seeing. I've been seeing it, we've seen it around our nation, we've sent it to a state, and now we're seeing it in our county. A year ago, we were all hit with a great unknown, the COVID-19 virus, you know? And though the virus saw no colors, the effect of the virus has been illuminated and exposed and has exposed a systematic problem that has so often been ignored. And as the world went inside and confound, you know, locked up because of the pandemic, it seems as if racism and a sense of superiority came outside, and this time, it was televised. And Marion County, again, you know, and this is something that I've been concerned about, Marion County, again, seemingly has missed out on what the effects of a group of people who are tired of being oppressed and mistreated like so many other places in the country. We've seen many riots, we've seen many things happen, we've seen all things go on. I'm purposely speaking this way because at, to this point, I have not had a chance to even digest all that I have been made aware of. I'm surprised and really kind of confused, but the mere fact that we're having to talk about it and the mere fact that we have to even bring it forward on tonight, in our school systems especially, in a county where we've had professional athletes of color and people doing great things and still coming back to invest in our community, to have students feel like they can't take it anymore because of conversations and behaviors from not just other students but from adults seemingly, to they want to walk away from something. Not fight, not necessarily cause a commotion, but after once identifying a situation, to then have to go back out to it again and say, "I just can't take it anymore," and want to walk away, to be penalized. I'm very concerned. The reason, other reason why I cannot be as specific as I should be, because again, like I said, it has just come to my attention, it was just brought to my attention that it would be discussed possibly tonight, and so I'm here to show and to say that I believe that we need to look into something because Marion County is just the right person away from possibly seeing what we're seeing, we have seen around the country, where a group of people are just sick and tired of being sick and tired, treated like three-fifths of human, and begin to react because it seems no one else is paying attention or willing to respond. So with that being said, I just wanted to share with you that on tonight, as we're here, we're paying attention, and we want to see what we're going to do moving forward as a community, because blatant racism, blatant senses of superiority, and the feeling that you can talk to anybody any kind of way and it be waved away as, oh, we're just cheering on, or we're just jiving, or we're just talking trash, at some point in time, we have to say enough is enough, and that's all I have to say on tonight.
Thank you, Bishop Stockton, and please know, sir, that this is just coming to my attention as well, and so as the blanks get filled in, I just want to emphasize that any kind of behavior like that is abhorrent, it's unacceptable, and won't be accepted. So thank you very much. Next.
Nicole Cicero?
Hi, my name is Nicole Cicero, C-E-C-E-R-O. I live at 5330 Southeast 161st Avenue Road in Oclavah, Florida. I'm coming to you tonight because for all intents and purposes, we're going to call her my daughter. She's my unofficial adopted. She's lived with me on and off for several years. She had an incident on March 3. The teacher, I'll explain really quickly, a teacher thought that she was passing a vape around. Come to find out, it was a pencil. That my daughter got called up to the dean's office, where she was put behind a closed door with the male dean and the male SRO officer. Those two people of authority told her to lift up her shirt so they could see her waistband, turn around, pull out her bra to make sure that she had nothing under there. They did not tell her that she had a right not to comply with them. They did not tell her that she had a right to have a woman in the room with her or someone of the same sex to even search her. to have a woman in the room with her or someone of the same sex to even search her. There are female staff there. There should have been a female in the room. I understand that there are different procedures and precautions that need to be taken when it's a dire emergency in certain situations. This was not one of them. This was a mistake where my daughter felt violated. And let's, if she were, as many, there are many, many children, we don't know their history. If she had been a child of sexual assault in the past, that could have unleashed an enormous amount of trauma onto her. My daughter has not been a sexual assault victim. However, she's been traumatized by this situation. She's afraid to go to school. She's afraid to be looked at by her dean and the SRO officer. She was singled out for passing a pencil to a friend who needed one, and that friend passed it back. And then, because the teacher assumed it was a vape, how that assumption came about, I have no idea. But the teacher assumed it was a vape, had her brought down to the dean, and then searched without any consent or telling her that she didn't have to be there. She didn't have to say, yes, you can make me take my shirt and pull it up and pull out my bra. She felt violated. I want to see what is going to happen, what you are going to do to stop this. We were told by the dean that everything was videotaped by the SRO officer's camera, kind of to protect them, especially in today's society, I guess, the way it was explained to me. This was a volunteered information from the dean. That dean also, we had called to see if we could get a copy of the videotape to see what was going on, on that videotape. Conveniently, the videotape either never got recorded or it is now missing. So, I don't know what the rules are as far as the videotaping of the children whenever they are being searched. It was my understanding that whenever a child was pulled out of class, that camera goes on. However, at the same time, my biggest concern is the fear that those two men of authority put her in. She felt like if something were to have happened, nothing happened, but if something were to have happened, it would have been a minor, a female minor, going against two men of authority. That never should have taken place. She should not feel the way that she feels today. She should, this happened on March 3. She's been continuously going to school, having to deal with this. It shouldn't happen. Not only that, but it needs to, all the children should have a right to know that they don't have to comply to the searches. They do have a right to say, I want a female to do my search. I want a male to do my search, if it's a male student. They should never be put in that position. We teach our children that you're not supposed to be in a room with a man behind a closed door. You're not supposed to be showing your stomach and any other parts of your body on a camera. These are the things that we teach our children. And then, we tell them, okay, because I'm somebody in uniform, I'm somebody in power, you can come into my office. We're going to shut this door, and you're going to lift up your shirt and then pull out your bra. To a 16-year-old child, excuse me, 15, she'll be 16 in September, it's wrong. We need to change it. I understand it's within their legal rights to do so, but just because it's legal doesn't mean that it's right, especially when you're dealing with minors and this type of situation. So, my question to you is, moving forward, how can we address this situation so not only my daughter feels safe while she's in school, but other children don't have this happen to them?
Dr. Gullett, can you, I mean, that should not happen.
Let me say this, Ms. Cicero. Thank you for sharing this with us. And it's in nobody's rights to have their rights violated, kid or adult. What school did this happen at?
Vanguard.
Thank you.
Our superintendent is going to make sure something, that we get some more information on this.
That is why we're here.
And we will get back with you. Somebody will get back with you.
Please do.
From this district. And Dr. Gullett, please, if this kid needs to see somebody. Thank you.
Absolutely, ma'am. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Vanguard is one of the schools that I represent. So, you have my word. I'll follow up with Dr. Gullett and everyone else.
Please, and thank you.
Is your daughter back in school?
She's been going to school. She, I did take her out that day because she had called me completely distressed and emotional, calling me saying, Mom, something just happened and I don't want to be here. So, that breaks my heart that those officials put her in that position. But she's here tonight to speak on her own behalf about how she feels and what she'd like to see done.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming. Do we have your phone number?
Yes, ma'am.
Who I can follow up with?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robert Dubkowski?
Bob Dubkowski, 5335 Southeast 103rd Street, Bellevue, Florida. D is in David, O, B is in Boy, K-O-W-S-K-I. I'm here to talk about a situation that happened at Lake Ware High School on Tuesday, the 16th, in reference to one of the players on the team. There was some racial situation where the player from Lake Ware High School was being called, I guess the N-word, I guess we could say. Continually throughout the game, the situation got volatile. And at the end of the game, there was nothing done during the whole entire game. The umpires had no control over the situation. At the end of the game, the player was distraught, okay? On the field, distraught, was taken off the field. And then, after the game, there was, he got a little upset, and we kind of restrained him. And everything was fine, a-okay dandy. He went back to the field, did his chores, and then the next morning was subsequently thrown off the team by the coach for whatever reason. I have no idea. I've since talked to the principal about the situation before I came here tonight, and she has said that she's the only person that can throw anybody off the team, and he's been reinstated. I think he's, Mr. Phillips is at the meeting with the parents, and Mr. Phillips says the state said there is a two-game suspension required by the Florida High School Athletic Association because he left the base. So, I'm here just to say that the situation was handled incorrectly by the employees of Lake Ware High School. I know Coach Wisdom personally. I coached Lake Ware High School with him. I know he has the best interest of the players at hand. I think he just handled the situation incorrectly and that he could have done it a little bit better. And maybe there's some instructional control or some type of training that he can have to make himself a better coach under certain circumstances. As a parent, I have two players on that team. I'm concerned about the safety of my children when they go play Taverri's in a couple of weeks. The behavior of the coach for Taverri's was absolutely disgraceful. I've coached high school sports in Marion County. I've coached, I've been involved with college sports, Little League, Babe Ruth, American Legion baseball. Never have I seen an incident that happened at the game the other day, where actually players were calling, using that, the profanity, the N-word, cursing at the players, cursing at the umpires. Nothing done by the two umpires on the field. So, I would hope that the school board would talk to the head umpire crew who was there and have them retrained or somehow or other handle the situation better. I'd also like to know if there's going to be any conversation between the Lake Ware School Board or the Lake Ware Superintendent and the Marion County Superintendent, what's going to happen to, or who's going to be there to protect our students, our parents? As they left the field that night, in the bus screaming and yelling, they collectively as a team, obviously with the coach in the dugout, you know, let's get the F out of here. I mean, things like that are very frightening and disturbing to a parent who has to now travel to Taverri's with his kid. Who knows what's going to happen? If they're willing to exhibit that type of behavior away from home, what's going to happen when they get on their own territory? So, those are the types of things I like to have addressed. I think we need to be transparent, as you spoke about earlier today. Like I said earlier, Coach Wisdom, I think, has the best heart for the players. I think he wants to do what's right for the players. I just think he just kind of, he just jumped the gun. So, there might be some training that he might have to go through, I think he should go through to maybe help him in the next time this situation happens. And let's just be honest, you know, the kids were told that the superintendent and the administration threw him off the team, you know, which we found out through different conversations with different school board members and the superintendent and the principal that that's not true. So, that's basically it. I just hope that in the future that we can get the school board to talk to the umpire crews and let them know that the, that type of language is unacceptable. I've spoken to at least half a dozen baseball coaches, high school baseball coaches outside of Marion County, all said the same thing, that the game would be immediately suspended, the other team would be asked to leave the premises, and that would be the end of it. So, that's basically it. I'd just like to know that my kid's going to be safe when we travel to Taverri's, that the player at hand and other minority players are not going to be treated without, you know, treated with human dignity, and that the coaching staff doesn't say things like, you know, you're going to have to learn how to just deal with that. That's the type of stuff that is somewhat troubling, that, you know, we have to, you know, punish the victim of that type of stuff. So, thank you for letting me speak. And hopefully, our kids are safe when we travel to Taverri's. Thank you.
Mr. Thrower?
Thank you, sir.
Board Member McCall? See, Mr. Phillips is here. I don't know what the Florida High School Athletic Association, I would be very interested in what the protocol is if a team is out of control. And I don't know enough about the situation. I did receive a phone call, but there's got to be some kind of rules, regulations about behavior on a baseball or any field.
And even if there isn't, right is right and wrong is wrong.
Well, correct.
Which is described as 100% wrong.
But I mean, the situation was that the adults did nothing to stop the problem. The umpires, the coaches, Coach Wisdom in the fifth inning went to the home plate umpire and, you know, because they were literally cursing and screaming at our players and asked them to stop. And then, the Taverri's coach went down to the third base line and mocked Coach Wisdom and, you know, told him to keep it up, just don't name their numbers and their names. And so, it got more and more volatile, and the coach from Taverri's provoked it even more so that when the player in question got up at the last inning, when he got to second base, the player from Taverri's literally walked over to him with the glove in his hand and smacked him in the back of the leg after the play, used the profanity, that word again. And he finally was thrown out of the game for the tag. But this stuff, my son's the catcher. He said, Dad, it was continually the whole night. They just kept on saying these type of, these words and stuff.
Again, Mr. Phillips, can you tell us, I mean, I just, what is the protocol when a game like that gets out of control? I would like to know.
He is going to have his chance to speak. Thank you, Mr. Dubkowski, for bringing this forward into the light. Thank you. We have Mr. Phillips next.
Oh, he can speak.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
It's Mr. Phillips next.
No, but he can speak to the.
Yeah, let's, right. Let's keep a sequence going here. Thank you, sir.
Specific to your...
Can I ask, Chair, is there anybody else going to be speaking on this same topic?
Yes.
Oh.
Can we hold Mr. Phillips till we hear everybody? Chair?
We can do it anyway. The board decides. I think we're all here for the same reason, and we want to be fair to everyone.
So, we can have the other speakers in here?
Yep, that's fine with me, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Ms. Christine Dubkowski?
Good afternoon, everybody. Christine Dubkowski, 5335 Southeast 103rd Street in Bellevue, and it's D-O-B-K-O-W-S-K-I. And I think my husband really did a very good job of clearly explaining, I think, my concern and a lot of people on the team's concerns. I am here both as a community leader and as a parent. The child in question has played Little League at Bellevue Sports Complex for many, many years, and I've known him and his family for a very long time. And I was very concerned about when I heard, when I saw what happened, because I was at the game. And as my husband said, we have some children who play on the team as well. And I won't, I won't go over the details again. You know, clearly, it's, everybody has, that was at the field that night witnessed the profane racial slurs that were, you know, that were perpetrated upon the child. And it was, it was not a good situation. It was very disappointing. And the most disappointing thing was the lack of action by the administrators, the people, the adults who were in charge of that situation. There was literally nothing done until, again, the seventh inning, when the umpire finally took, you know, the child out of the game who had, you know, physically done something to the other child. And then, I think that was just kind of the last straw for everybody. It was just, it was not a, it wasn't a good evening. And but what shocked everyone more so was the next morning when our, the team was called in to meet with the coach and found out that the child in question had been removed from the team. It was, it was very unexpected and very shocking. And the coach did mention that he, it wasn't his decision. It was the decision of, he mentioned the superintendent and the state. And I don't, I don't know what the process was or who actually made the decision to do that. And that's one of the reasons that I'm here tonight is just to ask that there is a slow, thorough investigation of everything that happened throughout that game. The game ended at 10:30. At 8:30 the next morning, he was told he was, he was off the team. So, I don't know what the process typically is for these types of situations. I was also very concerned that after this happened, the parents weren't called to check on the child. They weren't called the next morning. And most disturbing to me is they weren't told that he was going to be removed from the team. They weren't invited to that meeting between the child and the coach. And after such a traumatic evening for the child to wake up the next morning, to go in to his, you know, meeting with this coach, I'm sure not expecting that outcome because he was really, didn't do anything wrong during the game. And to be told that without his parents present, again, I don't know the protocol. I just feel that due to the unique circumstances surrounding the situation, that it might have been more appropriate, certainly for the parents to have been involved and told about the decision. I know the young man, because my son's on the team, left the field crying. I don't know if he even had a ride home because it was, it was put forward as being a practice and a meeting for the kids. The reason I came here tonight is just, I'd like to make sure that there's a just outcome for the child, which I, from what we've been hearing today, that he has been reinstated to the team. And that's very good news, and I'm very happy to hear that. And I appreciate everything that anybody here has done to that effect to maybe help move that in the right direction. And I hope that that's the case. And again, as I said, just as a community leader and as a parent of children on the team, that there's just a really thorough investigation of how the situation was handled. I'm not looking to get anyone in trouble or anything like that. But this was a really serious matter. I mean, racial types of situations are very, they can get very volatile. It's very delicate. It certainly was horribly inappropriate, and that needs to be addressed. And administrators and adults who are in charge of these situations need to handle these things in the proper way. They need to have the proper training. There needs to be a protocol to keep everybody safe. The situation spilled over from the field to the stands to where there were, towards the end of the game, there were parents in the stands arguing and, you know, children in the stands being yelled at by parents from the other team. And it was just a really bad situation. It should not have gotten to that point. And so, you know, again, I just, I have confidence that, I know that all of you are taking this very seriously, and I certainly appreciate that. I appreciate the accessibility of everybody that I've talked to, and I know that you're going to look into this and make sure that the right outcome happens. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ma'am Dubkowski.
Paige Skyler?
So, my name is Paige Viu. That's V-I-A-U. And I live at 4613 Northeast 22nd Terrace, Ocala, Florida, 34479. I just kind of wanted to, like, put in my view of, like, the situation that happened at Vanguard. So, whenever, it's like, it's scary, you know? I'm a minor. I'm a female. In the world that we live in today, anything can happen. You never know. And the way that I was raised is you respect your authorities. You do what they tell you to do. You don't really. And then, so, being in the room with the SRO officer and then the dean, I'm not going to really ask a lot of questions, and I don't know anything. I didn't know my rights, which is a Fourth Amendment right that was specifically violated in that time. But, I'm sorry. in that time, but, I'm sorry, um, whenever they were telling me to do all of this stuff, I just did it. I did everything that I was asked to do, and it's scary, because if I didn't do something, there's the thought as, oh, I'm gonna get in trouble, I don't know what's gonna happen to me, or even if it's not just a school discipline thing, being in a closed room with these two grown men as an underage female, a minor, anything could have happened, and nobody would have believed me. Nobody. That being said, I believe there should be circumstances where if it's a female student, there should be a female in the room, there should be a female dean, 'cause there are female SRO officers, which whenever we, my grandmother went to the, the police station, or she called, and they said there's no female SRO officers, and the next day, whenever I went to school, I seen two. So, they lied to my grandmother, and there, they don't have the video, which the dean specifically said from the moment that they picked me up from the classroom to whenever I leave his office, they're supposed to be recording, and that's supposed to be protecting themselves as if so, nothing does happen? I'm sorry, that doesn't make sense. Kind of distraught, if that's the right word. It's just scary. Everybody knows what can happen today, or nobody knows what can happen today, actually. How would you feel if you were put in a room with men and told to do, you have to comply, right? They didn't give you a second option, they didn't give me an option for a female, or your kids, maybe. How would you feel if your daughter was put into a room with two grown men and told to lift up her shirt and pull out her bra, to check and make sure that there was nothing in there? It's sad, and it's traumatizing, and it shouldn't be like that for anybody.
Thank you.
Hold up, young lady, come back, come back, come back.
Thank you for having the bravery and the courage to, to speak up.
I, I wanna commend you for stepping up and speaking out, and speaking your truth about how you felt, because oftentimes, people don't speak their truths and don't speak how they felt. I'm apologize, I'll apologize for those actions. I don't, I don't know all the circumstances, but if you felt violated, you were violated, and, and you do have a right, you do have rights, and so, I wanna tell you, if you're in a situation like that, again, just say, I, I, I'm refusing until I get somebody that looks like me in there, and, and, and anybody that's listening to this should say the same thing, because you shouldn't have to go home feeling like you violated. Whether you had something or not, you still should not be violated, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for coming forward. I, I wanna tell you that we see you and we hear you, and, and we're not gonna let this just slide, so, thank you for having the courage to come and share. Thank you to your mom, we'll, we'll put mom in quotes, I guess, but thank you for, for having the courage to come forth. I'm, I'm only, it's unfortunate that it's been 20 days since this happened, and, and it's taken this long, I guess, for this information to come out, so in the future, if anyone is listening, please make sure that there is an administrator or someone else, there's a chain of command, and there are other people above the dean and the SRO, so we, we need to make sure that things like this don't fester and just continue to cause the issues it has caused for you over the last 20 days.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarence and LaShaw Kittens?
Good evening. My name is Clarence Kittens, K I T C H E N S, 75, 75-year-old, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I was speaking on behalf of my son, he was the kid from Lake Weir that was racially profiled or whatever, however you call it, but he was on the baseball field, and all he wanted to do is play baseball. That's all he ever did, and it hurt me to have to be here for him to go through this, and all he doing is playing baseball. I'm sorry. I, I, they, they, my son, I'm sorry, the first time it happened, they called him names on the field, the first time. He let it go. The second time, he had to take a stand, 'cause then nobody else doing anything, so what do he do? He's a kid. He haven't learned to take those words like I have. So what do he do? So he take a stand, and find out the next morning, he's kicked off the baseball team. So that make him don't wanna say nothing, never? No. I'm tired, he's tired, we all are tired, and I thank them for allowing him to be back on the team. I, I am thankful, but as parents, we believe that our son did nothing wrong. The only one attacked was my son. The racist slurs heard, heard him out were upsetting and demoralizing. We think he handled the situation well by walking away. All we want is for our son to play baseball, which he is passionate about, and have not similar occurrence that transpired on this day, all we ask is that he feels safe and respected all the other players. That's it. I thank y'all for listening.
Mr. Kittens?
Yes, ma'am.
We're better than this, we have to be better than this.
Right.
And I know, for myself, I'm just hearing about this, um, this evening, right here, right now, and it's beyond discouraging to have speakers that come up, you know, sharing what, what they shared tonight, so I think you've heard from the other board members that were committed to seeing it through, everyone has a role to play in this, but I can just say personally that I'm discouraged, and, and I'm sorry by what I've heard tonight, sir.
Mr. Kittens, I'mma back up to what Bishop Stockman said. The kid said, "I can't take it anymore." I can't take it anymore. We can't take it anymore as a school district, we can't take it anymore as a community, we can't take this anymore. And, and your son, you say he just wants to play baseball, well, there's some things that come along with playing baseball. He should be able to play baseball and race not be an issue. He should be able to play baseball and play the game and still be respected. I, I, I played sports. Jarring goes on, but when it goes to that level, it's not jawing, it's something else. So, I'm trying, I'm try, I'm, I'm, I'm exercising something that this, obviously, this young man did, that's restraint, because the way I feel right now, I really just wanna go off, because it's angry, it's angering me to even hear that this is going on, and that this kid has, is getting punished by it, got punished behind it. I understand that he's been reinstated, but I still, I'm still having issues, I'm still, and I talked to Mr. Phillips earlier today, I'm still having issues. I'm having more issues now, hearing, hearing other things. I was almost good, but I'm having more issues more, because I think that there needs to be an investigation of the whole incident, from N and one to N and whatever, and it needs to be a complete thorough investigation, and we need to know what happened from A to B, and whomever is responsible, we need to, we need to have some, if it's sensitivity training, I, I've already mentioned that to Dr. Gullett weeks ago about the systemic problem that I've already saw in this district, but we also, I guess, need to reach out to Lake County. If that school, if you're telling me that they're gonna have to go down and play Taverri's in a couple of weeks, and there's gonna possibly be an issue, why are we even going down there? Especially if they're gonna be subjected to that same type of mentality. Baseball broke some color lines. It shouldn't still be breaking color lines now. That Jackie Robinson did that. You shouldn't have to do that. So, I'm, 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 again, I'm gonna ask the board, Dr. Gullett, that we have a thorough investigation of this, from A to Z, everybody involved, I don't care who it is, they need to be, we need to be involved, and then to, to needlessly throw out the superintendent's name and say that, 'cause I'm looking at Dr. Gullett, I'm reading her expression, I can tell you, she probably didn't even know about this, and, and it, it just looks, I'm through, I'm through, I'm through.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings, and I think everybody on this board agrees, and sir, I am so sorry that you had to watch your son go through that. And I wanna sit here and say we'll get it right, and my heart wants to get it right. I'm not sure I can make it right for everybody, but I sure will try.
This is new, news to me, and I've been sitting here trying to put pieces together from the beginning till now, and just what I heard, just so hurtful, and to see the hurt and pain in your eyes, and I think it's your son, so, thank you for bringing that to our attention, because we can't fix what we don't know, and I didn't, we, I think most of us, by the reactions, we didn't know, but we will do our best to make sure that nothing like that ever happens again.
Yeah, be assured, sir, had we known, we would have already been on it.
Yeah.
You know, it's that glaring, and, and your, your son, young man, you, you deserve all the sympathy in the world, and, and I could see how you could be poisoned by this, and, and my prayer for you is, is that, that you aren't. It was, the actions of a few do not represent the actions of the all, and I hope that we can reassure you of that with our process going forward, and I'm speaking directly to you, young man, because it's that important, and I want you to know that you're important and that we do care, so, time will tell.
Madam Chair, I, I did learn of this over spring break. I reached out to the principal, because obviously, following a chain of command, she was unaware, at least to some degree, and speaking with Dr. Gullett today, she was unaware until today. Because it happened over spring break, apparently, the only people working were baseball coaches and athletic directors, because no one else was around to make any kind of judgment call, and so, that anybody else's names were dragged into this is absolutely inaccurate, because, again, there were only a handful of people working during that timeframe. I'm appalled by the situation, the way it occurred. There is no stronger advocate for student and scholar athletes than, than I will be, and, and I believe wholeheartedly that an athletic career is a pathway to a, a future for some of our athletes, and from what I understand about you, young man, it could very well be a pathway for you. Don't let this define you at all. Press on, keep moving forward, know that this is a moment in time that does not have to stop right here. You go out and prove them wrong every time you set foot on that field. Prove every one of them wrong, whatever they believe, whatever they think. Let your play show, and let your character show, and I believe the way you handled this is showing that's how you're gonna be.
I, I do have, is, is that the last person speaking for this, on this?
On this topic, yes, sir.
Then, Mr. Phillips?
Uh, then, Mr. Phillips.
I wouldn't, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If I may, Madam Chair, add to the board's comments to all of our speakers, and, unacceptable, I'm just gonna use the word unacceptable. I learned late yesterday that something occurred over spring break, and, and learned my whole executive cabinet did not know either, none of us knew, and so, thanks to the mayor for, I was returning her call yesterday evening, almost 6 o'clock, I think, and I said, you've shared a lot of information with me that I didn't know, and so, spoke with Mr. Vianello and said, we need a full investigation, so that's expected, and, and thorough, and, and to the point earlier, yeah, the superintendent's name was used, superintendent didn't know anything about this, and so there's a lot of pieces of this that, that we have to be really diligent about in addressing, and know that this is not okay in Marion County. This is not acceptable, and we'll make sure that it's thorough. I will also be reaching out to the superintendent, Lake County, now that I have a lot more information and continuing to get information, and speak with, with her directly as well.
And can we also, I, I don't know, Reverend Hart just walked in, I know that, that I'm hearing different things, umpires, coaches, not, not umpires, not coaches, but umpires and the refs, they, we need to talk to that group as well, because if it had been me, and I, I shared this very frankly with Mr. Phillips today, if it had been me, or my kid, another ball wouldn't have been thrown on that field, 'cause I would've shut it down, and that's not being mean, that's just saying, that type of behavior can't, can't happen, can't happen, and should never happen, not, not in this county, and not, it shouldn't happen anywhere, but definitely not here, definitely not here, so.
We need to address the adult behavior.
Yes.
No question about it, sir, and I think that Mr. Phillips might be able to shed some light, I think he knows a lot more about this than, than I know that I do so far, and so, but absolutely agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for coming.
Thank you. First, let me say that certainly, you know, I'm embarrassed, as you guys, we, we definitely to go to one specific part, the information that was shared with the young man about the team removal was very much an error on our part, and we, we did get to meet with the family and, and share that with them today, so, and apologize, and that was completely an error, and the things, I'll go back to Mr. Dubkowski, shared some information that was very pertinent, and I would say he was pretty much spot on from the things that we are learning, and I do agree with him, and we talked about that today, but I do want to say, and, and in talking to the Kittens family and DeShawn, and that the coach is concerned, was concerned, and I don't want that to be, to shed any different light on the situation. He loves DeShawn, and very much cares about him, as do the other folks at Lake Weir, and so I think, in that case, it just certainly doesn't need to overshadow anything about the situation, but in fairness to the school and to the coach and the folks, they, they very much are concerned and want to correct any wrongs and, and make sure that it is right. And I apologize. Ms. McCall, can you go back to your question?
I just, I want to know, and, and I, after the mayor's contact with me, I immediately called, contacted Mr. Phillips, and so I hope I kinda got the ball rolling on all of this. I would like to know, what are the guidelines, the criteria for field behavior from the Florida High School Athletic Association?
The best mode that we would have going forward is, A, collecting all of the facts that we can, and doing a full investigation of the situation, and it's relative to, just as Mr. Cummings said, relative to officials, to, to our team, to the other team, and administrators and such, and then being able to communicate that also along with, in a situation such as this nature, would be with the superintendent, being able to communicate with the other superintendent, and even principal to principal. That's generally how they would want it handled as well, would be between the district and the school level. I mean, they can certainly mediate it if needed.
What about, what about the umpires? What about the officials? How, how does that work? If it was going on, and they did nothing, what, what are the steps that are taken by the Florida High School Athletic Association for that?
Well, the, we, we would, again, collect our information, and, and we're, you know, in the midst of that, even with them, and talking to the officials on site and the head officials, official, and then, now we will, once we get that all put together, we will go back to them and ask them to do an investigation, which will, I'm sure, be as early as tomorrow morning at this point, and ask them to do an internal investigation, and then all of that information can also be shared with the FHSAA as to why something may or may not have been addressed, if it becomes corroborated and that the situation shows itself.
Okay.
Mr. Phillips, you got Reverend Hart behind you, who's an official.
Yes.
Reverend Hart, can you come up as well? If there's, if, if there's issues with- The, uh, Dr. Gullett to the school board members, to the chair, to Ms. McCall, you asked a question in, in the official guidebook in section 500, I'm reading it straight from here, and I don't have my glasses, but, Mr. Phillips, you can read it. I don't have my glasses with me, but-
It just fog up, anyway.
You got some reading glasses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is how we work together. All right. In section 500, it, it deals with disqualification, ejection-
In section 500, it, it deals with disqualification, ejection of athletes and coaches. 501 says sportsmanship and unsporting conduct policy 30. 501 part one, the sportsmanship and ethics. Student, athlete, coaches, administrators, spectators, and all other persons connected directly or indirectly with the member schools as well as contest officials shall adhere to the principles of good sportsmanship and the ethics of competition before, during, and after all contests in which they participate and are attended. Procedure in disqualifying of athlete, what should have happened that night? Thirty-six years, okay? I've called football and basketball thirty-six years. I am the inspector of MF4A. When Mr. Phillip turned it over to us tomorrow, I will start investigating tonight, all right? Is that what we have to let our athletic directors and coaches know? That any time that a court feel unsafe for him or her, their team, they can go to official and call the game and say, it is unsafe. And send a statement to FHSAA why they, they stopped the contest. That's all they have to do. We have, you have that right as a school to stop the play anytime you feel unsafe. And, and, and that was unsafe act. And I cannot explain why the officials did not hear and the parents heard. I cannot, but I will get their side of it. I promise you that, all right? But then, then the player should have been ejected if one used that profanity. You go to the head coach first of the offending team. You tell the head coach, take your time and let them know that the player has been ejected. And then you go to the opposite, the other team, tell the head coach also that that player has been ejected. And if the head coach start egging it on or doing something that's not good sportsmanship, that person, the head coach, should be ejected also. And, and, and once they're ejected, then the AT-6 form will go to FHSAA. And one will go to Mr. Summers, our president, and one will come to me as inspector. And then we inspect. But that's what should have happened. And I can't tell you why they didn't do that. I have to hear their side of it. But that's what should have happened. And anytime they start using the N-word, we should have stopped the contest. Stuff is that.
Thank you for those clarifying statements.
So let me, and I'm still having, where I'm having the issue is, and I'm, I'm hearing everything. I talked to some a little bit today, earlier today, got some of this, talked to Mr. Phillips. I have an issue with the two-day suspension still. And I understand from what Mr. Phillips was telling me that it comes from the FA, the Florida High School Athletic Association. But if that's the case, we need to appeal it. We need to do something because I look at it this way. This kid, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the suspension is for, let me say that. But if he was able to walk off that field and not take the bat and beat and go after somebody, that shows restraint. That shows a lot of restraint, and he shouldn't be penalized for that. Everything, if he's emotional behind it, I get it. I would be emotional behind it. Parents should have been, everybody should have been emotional behind it. But I'm, I'm still having an issue with the two-day suspension. So I don't know what's the appeal process, if the parents need to do the appeal process, if the school needs to do the appeal process. But there needs to be some appeal for that, for even the two-day suspension. Because I think you ought to be commended that he did not do something that could have got him in some trouble. And he'd have been standing before us for expulsion.
And my understanding, and maybe I'm incorrect in this, but my understanding is he was able to complete the entire game. And if he was penalized for something that happened in the game, then he should have been either ejected or some kind of discipline happened during the game. But if he was able to complete the game, then why would the FHSAA then give him a penalty after the fact? And maybe I'm incorrect in that. Am I incorrect? Okay.
Yes, the game ended.
Okay.
Once the incident that occurred, the game was ended.
Okay.
And both teams removed from the field. And the, I will just tell you, as far as the penalty phase, it was the lowest level that they gave because of an unsporting report from the officials association to the FHSAA for unsportsmanlike conduct. And between two players on opposite teams, they both approached each other, is how it was written by the official association, and they do not allow that because of what it escalates into. So that was written up in the report and why the level-one offense is a two, two-game suspension.
Let me ask this.
It's over with today.
So let me ask this, Mr. Phillips. So on a football field, you and I played football on the same team.
Yes, sir.
If two of us got into a, a squabble on the football field and one of us approached the other player, would we get a two-game suspension?
They, they could.
Would we have gotten a two-game suspension?
On the same team?
No, if we were, if the, if the opposing team.
Oh, okay.
If we just walked up to each other, we would have got a two-game suspension?
If the officials wrote it up that it was contentious between the two players?
That happens all the time in football.
They would.
And I never see two-game suspensions.
If it was written up that way, then it would be an unsporting act.
I mean, I see it in football, I see it in basketball, I see it all the time. Where somebody got hot, they walk up on each other, no hands are thrown. So you're telling me in baseball, if they just approach each other and the officials write up a certain way?
No, sir, I can tell you, if the officials wrote it up that way in any sport, and then the FHSAA interprets it as a level-one unsporting conduct because of the conference.
My question is, why did they start playing by their book so late?
And, and so the other student also received the same discipline from FHSAA?
Correct.
You're the young man? I commend you. I want to, I want to tell you that, I commend you. Because I, I, I think if it had been me, things would have been a lot differently. They probably would have arrested me for being, for having to deal with that. So I commend you for, for having some restraint. And I, I want to commend Mr. Phillips too for, for looking into this and being transparent with me today when I asked him. Because he could have, but I told him, I said, I need to, I need to know. Tell me what it is. And thank you, Julie, for that. So I'm looking forward to see what happened with this investigation.
Yeah, and, and just so that everyone does, you guys know that we, that is already in process. So we'll certainly get to superintendent who can.
We still want to appeal this decision because it's going to be on his record.
Right, we can, and that's, that's, yes, certainly. And, and we have been in communication with them about the situation as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Did you have something?
No, I was just curious, was he suspended from the game or school or both? I was.
The game.
The game, okay. And then I was thinking the record, so.
But his, but his athletic record, it would show. So if he's getting scouted, they're going to say he had a two-game suspension.
Okay.
Right, right. Well, and it, and it's all out there now, and, and this is big enough to where I, I hope this never happens again so that we don't. But, but my thing is, is that it did happen, and I'm just hearing about it in a public meeting. We can't talk to each other because of sunshine law, and not everybody knows that. But if it's anything we're going to vote on or discuss, we have to meet in a public meeting. So it's not like board member Cummings could call me and say, hey, Nancy, you know, you'll never guess what happened. And, and it was like the perfect storm because of spring break. I mean, some people were literally out in the woods, you know, away from their phones for once. So the, the whole thing is just really, really disgraceful. And, and my, the only request that I have is that anything that, when you smell smoke, the board members and the superintendent have, have got to, we've got to figure out a way, no matter where we are, to, to get information to us. Because to hear it like this tonight, it just makes it even worse, you know? Because I'm trying to hear it and process it all at the same time. And I'm kind of with board member Cummings on this one. I'm like, okay, what do we have to do? Because I'm ready right here, right now. And, and, and I know that, you know, we all need time probably now to calm down because we first, I'm just hearing about it. So, so a lot didn't go right. I guess I'll just leave it right there for tonight. All right, thank you. Unless you have something else?
Not unless there's further.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So to the parents, as you can hear, the chair, the chair just said there, there will be an investigation. And I don't know, again, I, I don't know, Mr. Phillips, how the appeal process goes for that kid, if they need to do it, but please give them direction on what they need to do.
Right, and keep us posted.
We don't want that on its.
No, no, and if it takes us signing a letter or something, this board member says, please hand it to me. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you to all of you that came up and spoke on that issue as well. And then to the young lady, again, thank you for being brave enough to come forward.
Two brave kids up in front of us tonight with a lot of courage and, and support of their families. That's how we get through this.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop Stockman. Okay.
Ms. Melanie Slaughter?
She's in the hallway.
She's in the hallway. She'll be in.
Thank you.
I know it's dead.
Melanie Slaughter, you know how to clear a room.
I know, I got everybody out of here. Melanie Slaughter, I am here to talk about something totally different, so that'll be the upside. I am here to talk about summer school. I am encouraging the board, I, I think that money's coming in from the CARES Act, to consider running a full teachers busing summer school for kids that kind of fell behind in the pandemic over the last year. I can tell you that the, when my kids were out of school for nine weeks, and they are very good students, it was a nightmare. I mean, they did not learn a thing. I had to get them tutored over the summer so that they could, in, in math especially. So when they started school, they would be on track to take the classes they had to take this year. And a lot of people cannot do that. They rely on the Marion County Public Schools to make sure their kids are where they need to be. I would ask the board to consider getting with, you know, the principals at these middle schools, if there's kids that have fallen behind, that are credit deficient, that we try to use summer school to get them caught up. The, the middle school principals know who the kids are that are falling behind. If they, if they are credit behind in reading and math, they're not going to graduate high school. And I can tell you right now that it's not going to happen. So we've got to catch those kids up. If they can just get a half a credit over the summer, that's enough where we can work with them when they get into school and catch them up, and then they'll be able to graduate. So I would, I would just ask the board to consider that. And I think that that would help a lot of kids who have been really affected. I mean, thank God for Marion County and thank God for Florida that we had school. Because, I mean, I don't know how these kids, they have not been in front of a teacher for over a year or ever going to catch up. I mean, I don't think they could do it. So I thank the school board, I thank the teachers who, you know, in a leap of faith went in when nobody really knew what was going to happen. But one, one of my four kids was out for two weeks because of classroom, I mean, nobody tested positive, but somebody's parent had, and he was out for 14 days. And it was very, very hard to catch him up with just a 14-day absence. It was very, very difficult. And took a lot of, you know, working with him and things like that, that a lot of parents do not have time to do. So I would just consider, especially if you can, if we can work it out with the buses and stuff to get the kids who need it the most to the schools, to be able to get some instruction over the summer, especially in reading and especially in math. Those are the two that really just decimate kids. And when they have got to take algebra and geometry to graduate, I mean, I, I mean, that is very difficult for kids that miss sections of math. I mean, it is extremely difficult. And it's, and reading's the exact same way. If you do not read, you know, and you don't do it on a consistent basis, and a lot of these kids do not, it, it is very, very hard. It is just very, very hard. And so I would just ask the board to consider those, especially in those two areas. Because I think if we can reinforce that and get them ready, that they'll be a lot better in the future. Because I had a, just, just as a quick aside, I had a client who came into my office today. He had a Kent daughter who was in the second grade, reading on a kindergarten level. Because her mother decided to not put her in school all year, okay? And the judge put the child with the father because the father wanted her in Marion County Public Schools. And the child now is reading at a second-grade level. Because she started school in August and she worked with the, the school the entire year. And now this child is reading on grade level and loves to read and loves to go to school. Because her father saw she needed to be there. And that's the difference that a school and a good teacher can make in a child's life. Because you have a child that hated school, thought she was stupid, told her dad she was never going to learn anything, when she's seven. And now she loves school, and she wants to be a teacher when she grows up, okay? So I would just ask the board to consider that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Slaughter, you swear you run away. Not so fast. I did just want to give you one point, and, and that is, when it comes to credit recovery and, and getting credits, you know, you're singing my, my song. I was a former high school teacher, so I understand what a difference that a half a credit, we all do, makes. The, the superintendent, I think it would be good for the two of you to have a conversation because they come up with the programs and then they bring them forward to us to, to approve because those programs cost money. So please consider making an appointment and having a conversation with Dr. Gullett and Mr. Vianello so they can share with you some of the innovative ideas I know they already have for what's to come this summer. Because we're all on the same page in terms of everything you just said. So I just wanted to share that with you.
I appreciate that. And I just, and, and look, I understand that like economically, you know, you have to use things like Play-Doh and things like that to try to catch kids up or whatever, but nothing is better than a teacher. And, and you don't appreciate teachers until you have a kid. And then you understand what an amazing and great thing teachers are. Because when your kid has an amazing teacher, they are excited to go to school every single day. And it's an amazing thing to see. So I just want, there, I want other people's kids to have what my kids have, which is amazing teachers, and have them over the summer too, as much as we can get them for them.
Right, right, agreed. And, and I'm sure that Dr. Gullett can give you some good details on what some of the plans are. And since you are such a conduit to other parents, the sooner we can begin to get that out in the community, what our, what our unfolding plans are, the, the, the better it's going to be for everybody and more reassuring.
And the less discipline problems you're going to have in school. Because a lot of it is kids that are frustrated because they don't really understand, you know, they don't understand why they can't read, or they don't understand why they can't catch on with this math topic. And they act out in school and do a lot of behavioral things, and if we can catch this stuff up, they won't do it.
Thank you, mister.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Ho, 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 ho. Thank you, Ms. Slaughter, for bringing that to us. I think we, we all knew that, that we need to have some additional options for these kids. Because I'm saying, I know that we're going to have a lot of high school students that are going to be short credits. As I was talking to you before, when we were in school, we had summer school every summer, whether we needed it or not.
Right.
We went to summer school just to get ahead. So I don't know how, I don't know how it's going to work out for us financially, but I think we need to consider that option. Because, and, and at the high school level, that's one issue, but then at the lower grades, it's another issue. Because these kids have missed, have had so many interruptions. Some kids have had three and four interruptions. That's a lot of time. Forty days out of a nine weeks is a lot of time, you know? And, and that's about a nine weeks, I think. So we got to make sure that we have some other options. And I'm sure, please get with Dr. Gullett.
Yes, sir.
And discuss it, because I'm sure that we can kind of come up with something.
I agree. Doctor, Mr. Cummings, you talked about financially, but what comes to my mind is you pay now with financial? Or we're going to be paying later and our students will? And there's no price on their edu, well, their education, you know? So I think that's good. So that's all I had to say. Dr. Gullett?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would just like to say thank you because it is about teaching. Nothing replaces a great teacher.
Nothing.
And that is very clear, so.
Nine-week interruption taught us all that at my house.
Well, and we had two great examples.
Not programs, it's teachers.
Not programs.
No, ma'am, it is not.
So thank you.
Thank you. You have a great night.
Yes, you as well.
I'll talk with you.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 recommended instructional materials for adoption of 13 specified courses? Moved by board member Cummings. Seconded by board member Campbell. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in state statute. Thirteen titles for 13 courses are recommended for adoption this evening.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2020, 2021 recommended instructional materials for adoption of 13 specified? for Adoption of Thirteen Specified Courses? Seeing none, is there any further discussion, board?
I just wanna be really sure that all of this is in line, and I want it said publicly, with the new standards that are coming out. I don't wanna spend all this money, $7 million, on textbooks if they're not gonna align with the new standards. So, I just would like to hear that, and for the public to hear that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, board members. So, what I can tell you with our process here in Marion County Public Schools, we did have a team from the district administration, from curriculum instruction on both the elementary and the secondary side.
Excuse me, before you get too far, would you just please introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Jennifer Leeds, Instructional Materials Coordinator. So, on both the elementary and the secondary side, part of their review was to check that we were in alignment with the new standards for Florida best standards. In addition, those standards were also provided to the actual ELA Adoption Committee, which was made up of teachers, parents, and community members. And they were also asked to make sure that they were feeling that they were in alignment with state standards.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that information, it's clarifying. We appreciate it. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to adopt the 2020-2023 Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures Document? Removed by Board Member McCall. Seconded by Vice Chair King. Superintendent?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. This document complies with Florida statute requiring proposed procedures for the provisions of special instruction and services for exceptional students be provided, that they're provided to the Department of Education.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2020-2023 Exceptional Student Education Policies and Procedures? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, may I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C 7.1 through C 1 6.1 with the exception of Item C 1 3.1 that has been withdrawn completely, and C 1 5.1 that has been moved to discussion? Moved by Board Member Cummings. Seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, may I have a motion to approve Items C 1 5.1 Personnel Items 2020-2021 Fiscal Year? Moved by Board Member Campbell. Seconded by Vice Chair King. Ms. McCall, I understand you pulled Item C 1 5.1 Personnel Items 2020-2021 Fiscal Year. You wish to have further discussion?
I just need everybody to know, I cannot vote on it, because I can proudly say that my daughter has been selected for the new Tech Stock and Children Coordinator. So, I cannot vote on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And motion passes 4-0 with Board Member McCall abstaining. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $43,038.36? $2,500 to Bellevue High School from their business partner Advent Health Ocala via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Peasant Inn Elementary School from their business partner Allstate Construction Incorporated via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,538.36 to Hillcrest Public School from United Way of Central Ohio via pass-through from the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. CamPro Cutter, iVinyl Cutter, Powerhouse PQ Conveyor Dryer, someone knows what that is. Six Color Manual Screen Print Shop. Andura Press Clamshell Heat Press. Miscellaneous Embroidery Supplies SWF Single Head 15 Color Embroidery Machine, SWF Double Head 15 Color Embroidery Machine, Fire Cabinet, Miscellaneous Screen Print Supplies, Miscellaneous Vinyl Flasher Lumitron Exposure Unit, and Miscellaneous Screen Supplies valued at $29,000 to Marion County Public Schools Tech Career and Technical Education from Marion County Sheriff's Office, that was a mouthful. $5,000 to Romeo Elementary School from Mary Melzer. $2,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner Advent Health Ocala via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County.
So moved.
Moved by Board Member McCall. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. McCall, would you do the honor tonight, please?
Absolutely. As usual, we want to thank everyone so much for all the support that you continue to give our students. It has an impact on us being able to do that little extra that we do not have budgeted. So, thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you. All right, we have some meeting reminders. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for April 5, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss new charter school application review, annual review of alternative learning sites, 2021 updates, and 2022 funding projections, self-funded health plan, one of two, code of student conduct, one of two, district emergency management procedure manual, five-year school plan survey, one of two, district offices and MTI/MTC relocation update, and COVID-19 updates if needed. The following special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for April 15, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss referendum options. Okay. Onto committee reports, concerns, and comments. Dr. Gullett, we'll begin with you tonight.
Wonderful, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, just a couple of updates. April 5, as you could tell, is a very full agenda, and we will include COVID-19 updates, including talking about graduation. It's important to talk about that. So, I just wanna prepare everyone, it is a full agenda, but we will, I think it'd be a very important one as well. The Department of Health, we have our weekly meeting on Wednesday, so that's tomorrow. And you may have heard, there's talk about the three-feet social distancing that could impact our classrooms. And Mark Lander proactively reached out and said, you know, we'll talk about that on the call tomorrow. They're waiting for the state determination of what that looks like. So, I'll be sharing that as soon as we have that with you.
Dr. Gullett, which board member's on the call tomorrow? Okay, Board Member Campbell, great. And you always participate, so that'll be great, thanks.
So, thank you for participating with that tomorrow. And I would just end with, today, we started our meeting with hearing from very inspiring teachers, which just emphasizes all the great things that are happening in our school district. And we heard some very troubling information tonight, and I know that we're all processing that. I am as well, as we're learning a lot, I learned a lot tonight. And so, I wanted you to know from my seat that we will have a full investigation, and we'll make sure that we fully address these issues. And this behavior is not acceptable in Marion County, and our students are counting on us as adults, so, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, are you still with us telephonically?
I am. I have, I have nothing to add from the legal department, and thank you much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, Vice Chair King, we'll start with you tonight and work our way around.
I just have one question tonight. If we had a chance to work on a work session, if anything is scheduled for the bathroom use, single stalls and group bathrooms? I know at our last meeting, we had some discussion about that. So, I was wondering if we've had time to put anything together, or if not, I would like to request that we, as a board, know what direction we're taking with our students.
Is this in relation to your question from last, from on the 10th, as far as transgender?
Yes.
Okay, so, what I've done is, I've take those questions, they have been sent. Mr. Powers?
Yes.
You did receive my email this morning regarding Ms.
I did, I did, yes. I have not put anything on the agenda. However, I have the materials and am able to have everything ready to present and answer any questions that we may have. As far as actually putting it on the agenda for our meeting, I can, I can do that, or if there's a particular direction that you would like me to go. I mean, I have, I have everything ready that we would need to do in order to, in order to represent to the board what the legal issues are, and to allow the board to make their decisions. But, as far as actually making it an agenda item, if you'd like for me to do, I can do that. Otherwise, if there's staff that should, should bring that forward, I'll defer to Dr. Gullett.
And you're requesting that at a work session?
Right, well, we would need to discuss it, because by us not making a decision, we are making a decision. And I think that as a board, we need to at least have a discussion, be on the same page, and that way, there's no surprises that may come along.
And the legislature, according to our update yesterday, the legislature's currently pursuing their own.
I was gonna look at that, there was discussion today, so let me look at that while y'all are talking.
Okay. They, they were putting some, I'm not sure if it was House or Senate, I can't remember when I was reading last night, but the Senate was putting forth their own bill that may address it in advance of us even getting there, depending on when we put this on the work session. But, I agree that we need to have the conversation.
Was it sports, or was it bathroom use?
I think it was, I think it was sports, but it was, let me, let me just pull it up.
Okay, so maybe we'll just do that, but.
But, but you're right, it's timely, and we wanna be ahead of it. I know that it's gonna be impossible, I think, to fit it in on April 5, but with the legislature still discussing, would it be appropriate to see what comes down from them? Because we're gonna have to discuss that anyway.
Yeah, let me, let me see what happened today.
And that's not to kick it down the road, it's to do things in order and be mindful of everybody's time, and have all the information that Attorney Powers may need as well. What are your thoughts on that, Attorney Powers? As far as the legislature and so on?
Yes, I, it's in a, it's formative stages, they've not, I don't know that there's any, any, any clear sense that we can get of what direction is going to be taken. Though I do believe, based on current status of the legislature, that, that there is some action that's going to be coming down the road to address, so that local governments and local public schools don't have to, don't have to stand it alone, so to speak. My only question is, as far as a presentation item, I, I stand able to address anything that, whether it's from the legislature or just regarding our own policies and resolutions. From a presentation standpoint, though, I, I just wanna stay within my role. If that's something that we are, that, that you're asking me to set up a presentation and make a, something to present to the board regarding the direction that we should go, or, or requesting guidance from the board as to what operation we go. I don't typically set things on the agenda. I can, I just wanna make sure that I defer to the superintendent and staff regarding whether, you know, whether setting it as an agenda item is something that they want for legal to do or for staff to do. I can communicate and coordinate with the superintendent regarding that, and make sure that, for whatever section we set it, we have a, we have a, all of the materials and, and the proper background that we need in order to take whatever action the board should decide.
What is the board's preference as far as, should we have a work session scheduled as soon as possible? Or what are your thoughts on hearing what the legislature has to say? What do any of you think as far as all of that?
And if I may add, I don't, given that we cannot say what is coming down the pike from the legislature, it is likely wise for us not to reinvent the wheel, but for us to find out what the legislature has to say. I don't know, I don't know what their timeframe is, though. So, if it's not, if we're not acting, if they're not acting quickly, of course, we want to make sure that we have our, our own responses. I just can't say, I can't say when those, how long those bills are going to take to get through committee and whether they get to committee. So, we can, we can choose to hold off briefly, or we can choose to move forward and address it now, realizing that we may have to alter whatever decisions we make based on what the legislative action taken is.
All right, here we go.
So, what was done before has sunset, is that correct? Or?
Yes.
So, it's.
It was a resolution.
It was a resolution, and it's.
It was a resolution, and it had sunset. And about that time, a different president came in, so what we were facing went away. And then now, we have a new president, and now it's coming back to us. So, that's what happened, and that's why I was confused, because I was like, oh, we had it, you know? Not thinking, but then, you know, when I was reminded of it, I was like, because I was like, what happened with that? So.
There was also that appeal in the Circuit Court, too, that brought it down more to, into our area. And that was just, what, in August, I think, that decision?
Yes, ma'am, August of 2020, and that was the Federal 11th Circuit. And that currently has stood as, I guess you would say, the guidance that other school districts are having to look toward, being that there is no other controlling concrete law. And so, we have to make our determinations, you know, based on what we choose to do regarding that.
Attorney Powers, have you been able to enter into any conversations, or Dr. Gullett, with other school districts that have already seen a major impact by this decision or have been dealing with highly visible cases?
I have, I have had, through Doc, or through Mr. Whitehouse, we have reached out to St. John's County, which in fact was the county in question in the 11th Circuit appeals case. And what we have, because they were ordered to take specific actions and steps, so we, we know a considerable amount about what actions they have taken, not necessarily that we wish to duplicate those actions. But, we do know how this has impacted them, and we have some structures as to how they have managed to incorporate that within their school system. Again, not that we need to follow the same path that they have, but, but we, we, we would look to St. John's County as being the county that was most impacted by the 11th Circuit decision.
Okay. I'm gonna, may I make a suggestion, Vice Chair King? Let's, let's get through the legislative session, because this is either gonna die in committee or go on to the floor to see, because that may guide what we do. That's just strictly my.
Board? Well, they may have the language that would help in framing. Because, and I'm unaware of exactly the language that was used in the original resolution. My assumption is it did not include specifics about athletics and things that I think we would need to also incorporate into ours. So, there may be some language that we can borrow.
I will prepare and have ready a copy of the resolution for all board members, and I will email that out to you individually, so that you have a packet of prior information that we have, that we've encountered, or that we've addressed already.
That would be great, because I remember it, but I wasn't on the board then, and I.
You're right.
Ms. King, I know you were on the board, but I don't even know if Ms. McCall was on the board then.
I came on, I was just as, as we were doing the resolution.
Okay, right, because it kind of all happened in the summer, and then you were elected, I guess, in November.
That resolution really dealt with more with bathrooms.
Right, right.
Than anything else.
Yeah, right, right. But it would be good to see it.
I think we do need to
The whole board, yeah. Thank you for doing that, Attorney Powers.
I will do that as well as the, uh,
Yeah, we were waiting. You were very quiet.
Well, I just was curious to know what my, um, board, fellow board members were gonna say. And I will again say, by not making a decision, we are making a decision. And if this is the, um, what the board has decided to wait, I would hope that we would be very transparent with our parents of all grade levels, that we have gang bathrooms and that students will be able to enter and come and go as they please. So as a parent, I think, Ms. Campbell, you would want to know that as a parent. And I think we should afford every parent that privilege of knowing what our district is doing, um, with our students until July or till the state tells us. So.
Can we keep the resolution, can we reinstate the resolution until we get something from the state?
I'd be fine with that.
That would be a Mr. Powers question.
Because I think I mean, just reinstate it until we do get clarity from Tallahassee. We have something in place. We don't, it's not changing. And, and then once we get clarity, then we come back and re-look at that again.
And my question
Reverend Cummings, let, let, let me suggest that, um, I will, I will pull that resolution and determine if there is anything that in, if, if, if this is acceptable, anything in my estimation which simply needs updating, um, and, and then send it to each member of the board and, and, and allow that to be viewed. Um, we can certainly, if it's the board's wish, we can reinstate it wholesale as it is currently. But of course, there are, e- even without affecting content much, there may be minor changes that need to be made quickly in order to reinstate it.
Okay, well
Can we look at it? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, it sounds to me like the first step is to see the previous resolution.
Absolutely. So is it our assumption, Ms. King? I'm unaware. I've not heard of any incident at all that has occurred. Are we under the assumption then that because the resolution is not intact right now, that issues have been occurring that are causing concern?
Because it was only intact for three months, right? Didn't it?
I mean,
It was like 90 days.
I have not heard of anything.
That was in 2016. It's now 2021.
I'll be happy to make copies of resolutions and I'll go ahead and email them all to you.
Okay.
You'll receive them first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And I've just texted
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Yes, sir.
Billian Gay at the Florida School Board Association. I could not find what happened in the Senate Ed meeting today on this topic, so I just texted her.
Okay. All right.
And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
That, that was your one little thing. All right, thank you. All right, Board Member McCall.
No, I'm good. I think a lot's been said tonight, a lot to think about, but I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Board Member Cummings.
What'd y'all do? Give all y'all time to me?
No. We know you have something, but don't
I was taking a lot of notes, a lot of notes, a lot of notes. Listen, um, quickly, tonight we, we witnessed some, some brave kids and some parents. Uh, we started off with a great meeting with, um, our teachers, our of the year and things, so we want to celebrate them. But I do want to commend those kids for being brave enough to come forward and, and, and give their truths. Oftentimes, we, we don't listen to their truths, so, um, I want them to know that, um, I encourage people all the time that when, when they see something wrong or they feel something's wrong, to say it, don't just sit on it, but use the processes in place to address those issues. Start at the school. I'm gonna say that again. Start at the school. Start at the school. Get with the principals, the, the leadership teams at those schools and let them know. And if you're not getting satisfaction, you keep telling somebody until someone hears you. And, and, and never, and I, I personally feel that, that neither this board nor the superintendent will tolerate or condone those types of actions. Um, we won't tolerate and condone. We heard tonight that we won't tolerate and condone, um, people viola- violating the rights of, of students, females or males. And we definitely not gonna be dealing with these racially motivated incidents that are affecting our students. So we want to know. With that being said, I'll move to the positive things. Glad everybody made it back from spring break. I pray that everybody had a restful spring break, um, and did some things that they wanted to do. We needed, God knows, we needed a break. Um, it came at the right time. I do want to, um, share that over the break, we had a couple of the community things that, that really, really went well. I want to thank our superintendent and, and her leadership team for all that they have done in helping the, the community facilitate, uh, the vaccination event. We had a, a wonderful vaccination event last Thursday at Reddick. And, um, shout out to Ms., uh, Principal Sandy, Chris Sandy, and her team, especially to Ms. Gotcha, who was there all day on her spring break. And it was really, uh, a, a good event to go into that area and vaccinate people, uh, for this COVID, um, 19 virus. We did about 300 people that day at, um, in the, in the breezeway of the school, of Reddick Collier. So, um, it was truly good. And we'll be back there on April 10th for the second shot. So thank you again, um, Ms. Sandy, and thank you, Ms. Gotcha. Uh, whatever we needed, she made sure that we had it, and they just were great. And then, um, on Friday, we were at North Marion Middle School, um, with a farm share food distribution event. And that was another great, great event. Um, I had to bother Mr. Villanillo, uh, on spring break just a little bit to get some information. And thank you for pulling through, uh, Mark. And, um, shout out to Mr. Ellers and his, his staff that made, uh, North Marion Middle School available. Um, it was a good event. Um, and, and I gotta, I gotta give these shout outs because these are people that I saw that really took time out of their spring break to do something to, to serve in the community, to serve in the community. Um, the assistant principal, um, Mr. Ronald Jones from 14 Middle School and his wife, Cynthia, who works at North Marion Middle School. They stayed there. They represented our school district well. And, uh, I don't know if you guys saw the video or anything, but there's like a lot, a lot of cabbage that they brought over. It must've been all the cabbage left over from St. Patrick's Day. There was bins and bins and bins and bins and bins of, bins of cabbage. And we could not give away all that cabbage, I thought. But they stayed there until every head of ca- that cabbage was gone. And so, uh, and I mean, it was a lot. And there's some hogs, there's some hogs on the north end that got blessed. There are some hogs that got blessed, so maybe we'll see them next year in the youth fair. So, but, um, truly, it was a good time. Also, I want to shout out to the students. There were some students that volunteered on last Friday that took the last day of their spring break and came out and served in our communities. And we made sure they're gonna get some volunteer hours for that, because these are some high school kids, some from Vanguard. I want to really shout out to Coach Yarn of North Marion High School, basketball coach, and the entire North Marion Basketball Boys Team. They were there. And they showed up, they pulled their jerseys, they, they had a good time. So it was really good seeing them out there serving. And to our, um, to the, um, the Reddick City Council members, they were there. It was just a good event and they stayed, they stayed, they stayed. We, we didn't get out there till 2:30, I think, on Friday. So it was really a good, a good event. And then I want to commend those kids again from North Marion because the event was sponsored by Representative Yvonne Henson Hayes. And, um, she got word of what those kids from North Marion did. And they even went down to her office, her local office, and did some work. And she was thoroughly impressed with them. Her aide, um, Francine Julius Edwards, uh, just shouted out to them. So again, we have some kids that are in this community that took their own time and came out and served in their community. And I think sometimes we think kids just take all the time, but we have to teach them how to give back. And that was a wonderful event for those kids to give back. So, um, again, great, great, um, great spring break. Um, tomorrow, I will be going to take a riding lesson because four of us are gonna be riding horses on Monday.
Not I.
Four of us will be riding horses on Monday.
Yeah.
I, I got, I got my helmet today and, uh, and so, uh, I look forward to going to the World Equestrian Center. Dr. Gullett, are you riding with us?
I was not invited, sir.
We can get you a horse.
I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to seeing you all ride.
Did you hear what she said? She said, she said, that's okay.
I will be there and support you.
So we're looking forward to this Black Stallion event on Monday, World Equestrian Center, um, to support and encourage reading for our kids. So, again, have a good evening.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. And, and thank you for everything you're doing in the community. It just seems like every week after week, you're coming back and, and sharing the outreach. And it's, it's so important. And, and I know everyone's grateful. Thank you. All right, Board Member Campbell.
Just a couple of things. Uh, Reverend Cummings mentioning teaching kids how to give back is a great segue. I'm grateful to Dr. Hembrook and the reopening committee, as well as two middle school teachers who are welcoming us into their classrooms for youth philanthropy in action. Uh, we started an online class today. Uh, Ms. McCall is taking one school. I'm taking another school for the face-to-face, uh, classes. And we have several other volunteers who are taking the online classes, um, between the two schools. So I'm grateful that we've been able to figure that out. And, and we'll see what the students choose and, and how they choose to give back. That's part of what we're trying to do. Philanthropy in its simplest form is for the love of humanity. And if we can teach everyone to have love for humanity, then all of what we've heard tonight will actually start solving itself. It's kind of one of those things you learn in kindergarten, as we started in the very beginning. Um, I wanted to also mention tag art. It didn't feel quite appropriate at the moment with Mr. Albright when he was sharing, obviously, in memory of, of Mr. Hall. But I'm so grateful for a partnership like Kids Tag Art. When I was an employee of Jenkins Auto Group, we were a very strong partner of that program and have been for many, they have been for many years. So I actually got to be in the room and select the art and see the amazing work that our kids are putting forth. And it, it's been a couple of years since I've been in the process. However, it takes creative thinking like that. It's not just the creativity of the art, but creative thinking to put dollars into our classrooms and dollars into our art classes. And that's just a fabulous partnership. And I, I would love to see if anybody else has another great idea like that can, we'll partner with you. What, what could it be to just, um, continue to think creatively on how we can do things like that to, to impact our students in our classrooms. Um, tonight's been a heavy night. I mean, we've, we've heard a lot. Um, I am so grateful for family advocates that we saw tonight. I'm so grateful that we had students with the boldness to share their truth, as Reverend Cummings said, but also for those families that have advocated to ensure that they were here to let their voices be heard when even their students may not have felt comfortable doing so. It really makes me concerned for those who don't have the family advocate. And so I believe that's up to the rest of us to ensure that we are advocating for those who may feel voiceless and ensuring that we are supporting all of those students every step of the way. And I also want to stress, as I said to Dr. Gullett today, and I said to one of the parents I had spoken with earlier, this is a new administration and this is a new day. So don't believe the way things have always happened is the way they're going to happen again. I'm not knocking any previous administration. I don't know how they would have handled it. But what I can say is, please don't make assumptions based off of prior knowledge. Please understand this is a new administration and give us a chance, um, to do what's right and to make things right. And on a positive note, I do want to encourage all those students who have two days left of this nine weeks to finish strongly. I know that some are, have been doing QSMAs this week, and it's, uh, a lot on, on kids. And just that they'll finish strongly over these next two days. And thank you, teachers. I know Friday is a teacher workday. You don't have kids in your classroom, but that does not mean that you're not working beyond all measure to ensure those grades are taken care of so that families can see how their students are doing. And, um, I'm, I'm just grateful for all the work that our, our staff and, and our teachers are putting in. This has been an incredibly challenging year, uh, but we are gonna finish strong and we are gonna be stronger on the other side of this. Thank you.
Chair, before, before you go, thank you. She reminded me of something. She said something. I don't know if you guys saw it, but there, the potential that there could be some waivers coming out for, can you mention something about that?
I'll defer to Dr. Gullett on that. I did get the email and, and, and read it. Um, nothing's written in stone yet. It's, there's requests.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm always hesitant to say something publicly till we have something in writing. So
Right.
Yes, we're waiting for the Department of Education to, um, follow up with us on requests for waivers, um, the federal government on the, the waivers for the testing, right, for the 95%, knowing that we don't anticipate that all of our students will come to do the assessment. So we want to make sure that, um, we believe that they've heard us in, in all of our collective efforts, but we have not yet received anything official. But they're working on that.
I asked that because I started getting phone calls
Correct.
Soon as it was announced. And I was like, no. And so sometimes they hear that we do know, so they don't think that we're trying to cover something up. But thank you just for, for that clarity. It has not been approved yet.
Right.
And hopefully it will get
And it proved it. And I can also add as well, as I'm sure that, that this is always out there, as you know, we're waiting for additional funds through the S R 2, and we anticipate S R 3. Um, we have not received anything yet, and we have not yet received the plan to apply yet. So as soon as we have all that, as always, we will share that with you and, and share that publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be very happy and prompt in applying for money.
We will.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Campbell. Thank you, uh, Board Member Cummings. I just wanted to share today that I had, uh, the opportunity to get my one and only vaccine. I got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at the Paddock Mall this morning. And Preston Boland and his team just continues to do an amazing job. They're so organized. It is a little bit weird because after you get your vaccine, you have to sit and be monitored for 15 minutes. So you have these EMTs kind of looking at you to see, you know. I don't know, I guess what they're looking for, they know. But it, that was the only part that felt a little strange, but, but totally worth it. And, um, because of your outreach in Reddick, you know, 300 people got vaccinated that may not have ever or, um, wouldn't have that day. So that is so important in our outlying areas. And it does make me wonder if there are any plans in the works for, you know, the East Marion area, Salt Springs.
There is.
Good, good.
Trying to get something possibly at the Fort McCord School.
Awesome, awesome. Because the sooner we get, reach herd immunity, uh, the better it's going to be for all of us. And my understanding is we've gone from uncontrolled community spread to controlled community spread, which is a, is an improvement. So we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel, I believe. Um, and yes, to everyone's point about the heaviness of tonight, you know, uh, silence is not golden in those situations and, and working together is really the only option. And I hope that that conveyed, uh, to everyone that was brave enough to come forward tonight and, and, and share. And, and the big work is going to be done by the folks that are with the kids every day and getting them on the same page of how these situations will never get to that point, um, again. And then, yes, a positive in my last thing, I received an email today from the Health and Wellness Manager from the Marion County Hospital District.
Oh, mammograms.
Oops.
Is that right?
What?
Oh.
Okay. I was like, uh-oh, did I say something?
Get on your mammogram, boss.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this is, uh, having to do, um, with the hospital district is interested in, in partnering, uh, with us, um, to discuss possibilities of providing services at
Howard Academy.
At Howard Academy, yes. And that's, uh, very exciting. They've got a lot of, uh, they've got a lot of resources. So, um, I hope that the two of you, uh, will connect.
We've connected and, um, hopefully we'll be doing a walkthrough or something.
Okay.
Very sorry.
Okay, great. And, and I left a voicemail and I wasn't exactly sure what to call the committee. So I called it the Howard Academy Redevelopment Committee. That's right. Use it if you like. And, um, and then finally, I had my, uh, refresher riding lesson this morning. Um, and it was, uh, it's just great to be on a, a horse. It's been too long. And the, the woman that, uh, spent the time with me, she's a retired jockey and she actually won the Triple Crown, not the Kentucky Derby, Preakness and, and Belmont, but the one for the female horses, the fillies.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So what an amazing lady. And it, it was just really cool, nice horse. So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to Monday. And I am so proud of you, Reverend Cummings. If, if this coming from a guy that didn't want to hold a kitten.
I don't do dogs, I don't do cats, but I've ridden horses before.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right. So you've been sandbagging us all this time.
So I do have information on the bill.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. So, so that's really gonna be fun. It's out at World Equestrian Center. It's the, uh, rebirth of the Black Stallion Reading Project, which was so wonderful and so well-received. I, I'm sure I would've been a lot more trouble in the classroom if the librarian had not introduced me to the card catalog with all of the horse books. And so it's just really fun to have that coming back. They've got a strong, uh, And so it's just really fun to have that coming back, they've got a strong, Okalo Horse Alliance is really pulling it together, so, great stuff. All right, Board Member McCall.
And Ms. King and I have our riding lesson Thursday afternoon, so.
Oh, and your riding lessons with a world-class adventure.
You're welcome to join us.
Mine is in the morning.
A gold medalist.
Yes.
The Promoting Equality of Athletic Opportunity, which is Senate Bill 2012, basically states that requiring that certain athletic teams or sports sponsored by certain educational institutions be designated on the basis of student's biological sex, prohibiting females from, you can read the bill. Anyway, in the, in the Senate Education Committee, it did pass today.
Is there a companion bill in?
I don't know if there's a companion bill or not.
I don't think there is.
I don't think there is yet, but now it goes into health policy, so. So, but it's to prohibit, and they play based on their biological sex.
And when does session end?
End of April, the end of April. So we are, so we're almost halfway through.
Okay.
This coming week, so.
All right, but it's not law until July, though, correct? Like when they, or when it ends?
Well, if it doesn't have a House companion bill, it won't, and it could die, and it could die in other committees.
Right.
So, okay. So I'll keep you all posted on this.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and I see Deputy Superintendent Viennello out there in the audience, and I'm so excited about it, because there's, to me, there's a new E, along with the three Es, so the four E have got enrollment, enlistment, and equine.
I thought she was gonna say equality.
That's you. Lot of Vs. All right.
Yes. On board members, I just want to let you know that during your work sessions, all of your questions are being listed, and I just wanted to let you know of the process of how we're going about making sure that you're informed and you have your questions answered. Once those questions, we put them, I put them on an Excel spreadsheet. Every Monday, we go through Executive Cabinet, and we determine who is the business owner. Once we get to the business owner, those business owners will reach out to you and respond to you within 48 hours. It will be on the overall school distribution, school board members' distribution list, so that I can see that you did get a response. Now, should you not get a response, please reach out to me. And again, just know, I just take a snippet of your question, so if they call you to ask you a little bit more specific, that's what they're asking, because I can't do the whole question in its entirety and really understand what you're trying to grasp, and whatever data you may want to be collecting. So just know that they still may be reaching out to you, but you should get your response within 48 hours of that Monday after Executive Cabinet, because they will have sent the email. As I sent Mr. Powers the email this morning, he would have responded to each of you on this transgender issue within 48 hours. So that's just the process, wanted to let you know that all your questions are being answered and being discussed. Your questions?
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, I got a phone call today from a staff member, and it was really good to get that information.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March 2nd, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 21-044 with educational services for the remainder of the 2021 school year and the first semester of the 2021-2022 school year? Moved by McCall, seconded by Cummings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
移到
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Board Member Campbell. Meeting is adjourned at 7:44 PM. Thank you very much.